All right, good evening. I'd like to call the January 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't have any announcements other than Happy New Years to everybody. I hope you all had good holidays and see everybody made it back from the little break safe. So is there anybody here for anything that's not currently on our agenda? Seeing as none, I will go right into a host community agreement discussion with Messis LLC with Michael Hunwell.
And CJ.
And CJ. That was omitted from my agenda, like does it reflect that?
No, it isn't your agenda.
Do you guys, are you going to be able to throw it up there or do you guys have your presentations?
We have printed copies of it.
All right, so I'll just, just so I can see on my laptop what's going on if you guys don't mind.
No, not at all.
You can have a seat.
You can have a seat, you don't need to... We're not that formal.
You both can have a seat.
Do I need to like speak into the microphone or anything?
That's good.
And CJ will let you sit down even though you weren't on the...
I know.
He is on the agenda.
I was gonna sit out in the parking lot.
He read the agenda, first it says he wasn't sure who else was gonna be here, and then today, nope, inside, inside.
I just go off the top page, right?
Then, see, that's why you make me look bad.
Hold on, I'm gonna add you on by hand.
They're really, really formal and actually count on my wall, so. No one calls him that, don't worry. Uh, let's see here, so, so, good afternoon. Um, I'm Michael Hunwell, this is my brother, CJ Hunwell. Just a little bit about us, so, I, um, run a company called Escar LLC, so we have, we actually have three HCAs. We have approval in, uh, Northbridge, Watertown, and Arlington. We actually originally looked at Douglas and then we found out that we got Watertown and we couldn't pursue anymore. So my brother approached me, he said, my brother's actually been working for years in cannabis POS systems, he found out about this and he said he'd like to get involved, he'd like to run his own business here. So I said, um, that I'd like to help him out, I can only consult, that's, that's it per the state regulation. Um, I have no interest in having this affect my other permits right now, so I just wanted to clarify that for the council immediately. But this is, this is my brother's business, it's 100% owned by him, I'm just, I've done this process before, the HCA process and the permitting process, so I said I'd help out, so here we are. Um, so, just a little bit about the two founders, it's John Paul Aldy who's, um, actually we all grew up together. So John Paul, uh, we all lived in a little town in Old St. Louis, Connecticut. Uh, John Paul is, uh, does years of property management experience, so he runs a, um, company out of Connecticut that does large real estate jobs for both restaurants and condominiums. Uh, he also got, um, New York University, he has MS in, uh, finance, uh, he's consulted with several, for years, he did a lot of investment consulting for Japanese firms overseas. Um, so he is managing obviously the real estate and financials for the company. Um, he couldn't be here today because his wife is out of wake and he's stuck with a three-month-year-old kid, so unless Douglas gets a daycare program, he couldn't make it. But CJ, um, I mean, you want, I don't want to sue your thunder, so you can talk a little bit about yourself if you want.
Yeah, so I come to the business essentially bringing more of the backend, um, logistics side of it. So, um, obviously it's at a very exciting time for all and that's why I want to jump into this, but, um, where my passion more lies is kind of set, like setting up the actual infrastructure for the systems involved. So whether that's the POS systems, connecting the financials, all the way down to the seed to sale, um, that's essentially my passion with that. And, you know, this is of us minor parlay, I've run some other businesses in the past, um, and held some up for Salesforce, obviously with the new industry, uh, in Carolina, it's a little bit different, but a lot of passion involved.
And so, um, if we go to the next slide, we can kind of talk about the logistics right now, there's 80 retailer licenses, um, that have provisional approval. The reason why we pointed that out is because we wanted to show that these are basically all the other firms that are gonna open up before us pending some type of incident. Um, basically they're in the state, state's giving them approval to move through, um, these are the various different locations. Um, some of them are already open, specifically 32 of these, 80 are already open, but that kind of gives you an idea of where these different businesses are. If you actually look at the map, you'll notice, um, that this area actually doesn't have a lot of provisional activity, which is good for the town. Uh, you can actually pull from, even though there's a bunch of firms in Webster, there's some roadways that connect, uh, to the Connecticut and Rhode Island area, which is also beneficial for the town. Um, I'm sure you guys already, obviously all know this, um, based on the ability to, uh, the way that it was structured and it seems like the town's favorable for these types of operations. So where we're proposing is at 148 Webster Street, uh, the property is a lot owned by Rob Cherry, it's zoned in RC2, which means it's not by right, but it's through, uh, committee. Um, it's a large empty lot right now, uh, Mr. Cherry was looking to develop it anyways, um, to put up a vendor building, he approached us, we went and surveyed the property, um, he seems to be very favorable, it looks like he can move pretty quickly through the local permitting process, uh, he seems to know the area very well, which all points to very positive signs for us because we don't want to be delayed, we have no intention of being delayed in the town process since the state process takes so long. Um, and we can talk about that, uh, towards the end of the presentation. Um, what's good about the location is it sounds like there's already a retailer on the other side of town, so this would position us on the west side of town, which allows us to pull people from the lake, uh, the trailer park nearby, uh, obviously the residents of the town, um, and then actually if you look at some of the major roadways, there's Berylville and even, uh, Thompson, which are overstate lines. Um, and since those states haven't legalized recreational, uh, that location would be able to pull from those residents as well, potentially. Um, so, you know, just a, a population forecast, there's 20, there's about 25 residents, 25,000 residents within a five-mile radius of that area. It obviously pulls from different areas, but we're not counting some of the other towns. Um, even though it is a smaller town, you know, Douglas is a smaller town, it's still because of the moratoriums and not legalization in other states, it still allows this area to pull from, uh, other resi, other residents, and so this makes it an attractive location for revenue, uh, potential revenue. Uh, so this, so if you look at the next slide, uh, this is the proposed building, about 2,000 square, 20, it's 2,000 square feet, but we're adding a 500-foot mezzanine, um, obviously one that's beneficial for security. Um, believe it or not, uh, my wife has actually helped with a lot of the designs for the, for these cannabis stores we've seen in the past, she worked for, she worked for New Balance, um, in their marathon division, so they typically will see 100,000 people in a day for some of their, uh, stores. The point is she knows how to move a lot of people. Um, and so, what we'll go with, we'll probably go with a holding room, uh, retail floor design, um, if you look at the next slide, this is just some renderings, uh, that, you know, when I sat down with CJ, what we kind of liked is the more organic feel, it probably won't have that green glass, but we didn't want to do, you know, to do a full rendering right now wasn't necessary. This is some of the other renderings that we've looked at. Um, the importance of a holding room is what it allows you to do is it, it increases the occupancy per the building, um, significantly. I think, I forget like retail floor space, but it's about 20, it's one person per 20 square feet if you just do pure retail, but if you add a holding room, it drops down to about four or five people per square foot. Um, so what that allows you to do is prevent loitering on the site, which is why you see a lot of these holding rooms. Um, you can also, um, what we'll do is we'll have glass areas, uh, we've talked to Stock and Beans and what we've looked to implement is we'll have QR codes behind all of the glass block products, and then what you can give is you can give folks tablets or phones and it allows them to quickly scan, which goes to your online, and so this drastically increases your inventory turnover. All this, what this means is you don't have lines outside, and I know that's been a big concern with, with different towns, so this, this design is allowed to prevent that. Um, and so, it also has a nice organic feel, it's not very kind of sterile environment, so, you know, branding is, is important too. Uh, standard security protocols, key card access, 24-hour video surveillance, holding room, uh, over 21 ID verification in, uh, twice, once you get in the door, once you go to pay. Um, additional security staff on weekends for additional workflow. Uh, all these are standard in the regulations, um, actually I think the double IG check may not, um, but again, the point is, you know, you look at, we try to be very conservative with a lot of our security measures because that and the POS system, because if anything goes wrong, we, we don't want to, you know, there's a lot of eyeballs on this, it's not worth us to, to do, to get in trouble. And so, you know, anyone who opens these, they, they have the potential to be a very profitable business, so we want to make sure, there's no reason to cut corners, which is what I'm getting at. Um, and so finally, what we're talking about with revenue projections, so this is sourced from, even though it says Nucleus One, all this data is publicly available via the CCC. Um, so our current, currently the average revenue daily per store is $64,000, that's about 20 million a, a year annually. Now, there's a couple of things, one, there's been a slight drop because of the vape ban caused a lot of people to, um, not purchase vape products, so that, you know, they go back to the black market. Um, that ended, so that number will probably improve. The other thing is you'll see more retailers come online, that doesn't mean that this number is proportional, um, because not everyone is driving hours to the local, to the one of the only 32, a lot of them are getting to the black market, or if you look at other states, you see an uptick in, in people usage rate over time as they purchase the product. Um, and so, what we're, what we're really getting at here is, once we think the market becomes saturated in a few years, is the Douglas store will probably settle on something between 1 to 3 million in revenue. And the reason why I bring that up and the reason why we didn't do financials is, what really dictates the difference between making 20 million a year and 1 million a year, or 3 million a year, is when we get to open with the state. And so the faster you move, the less for a tape you have to go through, the, um, the quicker you will realize these, these revenue numbers, you know? So that's why we talked about the 80 provisional right now, um, you know, the state, you, you look at the number of towns, you figure 20% the number of liquor stores, this, you're probably looking anywhere from 250 to 500 stores eventually. Um, if we get in line now, we'll probably be around the 100th store. Um, so that kind of dictates, you know, and then eventually if Rhode Island and Connecticut legalize and the state doesn't seem to pick up their, um, confirmation rate for these permits, that will obviously affect it. So that's why we tried to pick a lot that was, that was zoned correctly, we have a builder that, that's already ready to move forward. So we just try to emphasize that the, the time the market is kind of a, a big, a big point here, which we, we think we're well positioned to move forward with. Um, so, if, if we're, you know, if, if the Board of Selectmen, um, decides to issue us an HCA, where do we go from here? And so, we are, we have no objections to the HCA, uh, we've reviewed the document, uh, I think it's, it's actually one of the more fair ones. Um, it's, so, you know, we also know that someone else has already signed it, so it's not worth us, um, we accept all the, the measures, um, so we could sign it today. Uh, after that, we scheduled a community outreach, we had to give people, um, basically, uh, the new regs are, it used to be seven days, I think it's 14 now, um, we had to give them about two to three weeks' notice, so we have, we set up a meeting, get the community forum, get that signed, and then we, we immediately put the packet together and submit to the state probably two weeks after that, you know, we had to get all our ducks in a row, make sure the application's correct because you don't want it to get kicked out. And so, we, um, in the meantime, what we're allowed to do is concurrently go through the local perm, permitting with the town in Douglas. Uh, like I said, I, you know, currently we've heard everything from a year to two years with the state. I, you know, depending on if they improve their sta, it sounds like they're gonna improve their staffing, um, so I think that number's gonna start improving. Um, right now they're approving about three, three stores a month. Um, so again, we don't, you know, we don't want, you have to be very sure that you're ready to, to move forward as each step is your approval. And so, after that, once we get, um, approval to build, um, both with the town and the state, uh, start building, and then finally circle back again for final approvals, both with the town and the state. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it. Um, if there's any questions, we're, you know, we're both happy to elaborate, um, so I'd leave it to the board.
Just out of curiosity, you said that the HCA was, um, more fair than some others you've seen, in what sense?
Um, well, I mean, I'm sure everyone has seen the news articles about some of the HCAs, um, you know, the 3% tax, everyone pretty much does, you know, where I've seen, you know, some egregious liberties kind of taken is, you know, specific sums of payments for no reason, um, you know, it's staffing, donations to charities, mandatory donations, I should say, um, certain, yeah, right? Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't, I'd prefer to keep it positive, but that's just, I would say I've seen the HCAs since the news came down about the HCAs not being fair and people starting to look into them, I've seen the HCAs become more fair. Um, or even in the process when, when, and, you know, so, keep in mind, my sample size is three. Um, so what we've seen, and then, you know, through what we've talked with other people, um, I've seen that where they were fair was, you know, we were lucky in a lot of the towns that I personally was working in, they, the, the town lawyer or town legal counsel was kind of looking at where, where the future of this was going when they started hearing about some of this stuff, and they, they decided that it wasn't worth the risk to, to get a few extra tens of thousands of dollars in the chance that down the road someone turns around and hires a legal firm and tries to negate the HCA, saying it wasn't fair or something like that. Um, but I, I don't, I mean, I don't see any problems with this. Um, I mean, even the zoning's favorable, you guys did right to build in most of the zones, you know, that's, that's very uncommon. Um, you know, Caroline's Cannabis here, I'm sure they can talk to you about how the zoning hasn't been favorable in, in a lot of locations. Um, I've certainly experienced that myself, uh, but, you know, it's, I mean, it's here, you know, it's not going anywhere, you know, we just try to do everything right and make sure that everyone has a good experience, and I think that will help the town and it obviously helps the bottom line.
I don't think that we have anything put together to sign off on tonight as pertains to a host community agreement, and I know the last folks that were in front of us, we still ended up having, I think you sat down with them, yeah, to go over one, so I would probably ask that we just kind of follow that same protocol.
Right, we're just gonna use that as a template or a sort of.
Yeah, I mean, Matt, when we talked, you know, our name isn't on, we, I mean, we saw that it was pretty much the same, you know, you're not gonna, and I wouldn't want that, you know, I, because I, in the towns that I've opened, there's been the bigger guys and then there, when I started off, there was the big guys and then us, and, you know, they obviously had a lot more leverage at those points and I fought really hard for, you know, what they call like equal, I think it's Equal Nations Clause, basically whatever you sign, like everyone else should have the same clause. And so I think that, that clause is...
Favorite nation.
Favorite nation.
What was favorite nation status?
Oh, thank you.
Pull that one out of my butt.
It's a low.
It's passe now with...
Make them some big tariffs on it.
So I mean, like, you know, I get it, I think it's a fair, like I said, I think it's a fair HCA, we're ready to sign immediately, we have an LOI. Um, with Rob, we could probably, you know, get this all together and, and move forward within a few weeks into the state and just get into the queue. I mean, the important thing is getting into the queue. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's just on you to make sure that you cross your eye, or cross, cross your Ts and dot your Is.
Uh, no, it's not, who's the, who's the council that we had that helped us write that?
She, Federoff.
Okay, yeah, so we'd probably want to have her...
Oh, yeah. Shouldn't be a lot of work on her part.
Yeah, I mean, you can, we can, you know, just provide the documentation, but you, you can tell your legal counsel that we, um, there's no revisions needed, and then they'll just, yeah, you just say there's no revisions needed, and then they just ask for the name, this guy signs on the dotted line.
Sign you like.
Have fun.
And you're a Douglas resident?
Um, I'm not a Douglas resident.
Native.
Native president.
He would have been on the agenda if he was a Douglas president.
In fairness to Suzanne, I did say that you...
Thank you.
You guys are tough.
I have, and if I don't have it, you don't get it.
All right, um, just a question on scheduling, what do we need to do? Do we need to have them back in or...
Yeah, we'd want to get the document put together, have him come back in, we don't need to be meeting for that, and then we just vote on it at the next public meeting.
It should be the 21st.
Okay.
Do we authorize you to sign?
Would you, so today's the 4th, if there's 14 days, would you prefer...
You want it on the next agenda? Is that what you're saying?
I don't...
Or you just want to have him sign?
You want to authorize Matt to sign?
Yeah, we can authorize Matt to sign.
That's better.
Okay.
So we'll just attach the...
So are you guys voting then for the town manager and negotiator, what do they call it?
To sign it, because at this point it doesn't sound like...
Just the signatory, I don't think there's much negotiation.
Yeah, right? We accept.
I think we just, I think we just...
It just doesn't just out of work.
No mas.
No mas. Just a question on the, the bigger universe or question with this, we have as a town roughly three licenses that we can give out?
I think you wrote three into the ballot.
That's my memory, yeah.
So this would be number two.
Well, is this by default an agreement that the license would come, or do we hand out HCAs to anyone and everyone and let the...
The HCAs come out through and then he's got to go through the permitting process.
No, I know, so if people come next week or two weeks from now, it's not up to us necessarily to...
Well, I don't think it would be fair practice for us to enter into more HCAs than what we have for licensing, so we'd have room to do an additional HCA past this one.
I didn't go to business school, but I would say that's a very bad idea.
Yeah.
And I don't have time.
Well, the airlines like to overbook seats all the time, but...
I wouldn't be in favor of letting anyone leapfrog in front of these gentlemen either, I mean, they've come in and made their presentation.
But that's what, that's up to the state though, there's a whole bunch of different levers that have to be pulled.
Well, they have to do their work with the state, we're just talking about our HCA.
Yeah.
They've come in and they've asked for our HCA and I, the general impression I got here is that we're going to approve.
Yeah, the state, the state just, you know, in the end, you still have to get approval with the towns, which is why there's the HCA, which is why there's special permitting, typically, you know, so it's not like you can just like go to the state without any consultation with the town and just show up.
And because this isn't sitting in one of the zones, they're gonna have to go in front of the ZBA as well, sorry, to get special permission, so...
Yeah, that's why, so that's why, and again, because they're two independent authorities, that's why we can do them concurrently, so that's why when, when I was talking to Matt, I was like, we just need to get into the state. And, and so, and then from there...
And I see our task is just approving the HCA.
Yeah.
If we're gonna go more or less letter for letter, word for word, and the one we already approved, that makes it easy.
Yeah.
And also we'll take care of the details, but...
You know, and then the note is, is we have one additional one that we can approve past this, and we're just waiting to see, does it actually go to permitting, do they actually get a building? So if that ends up falling off, like if the Cannabis Commission comes in and says, hey, sorry guys, you know, you're not, but we don't want it to work that way, then we pull that back, shred that HCA and move to...
And there's towns, I mean, there's towns where they, they're doing that or done that, you know, there's either people who've gotten in trouble or something fell through.
We've taken great...
Just didn't mean to burden with the state.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the application, there's like, there's like something like a thousand pen, you know, incomplete applications, so there's a lot of people trying to do it, a lot of people don't go through.
I can see that we've taken a lot of care to make sure that what we're doing is uniform and we're following along to make it a seamless process or as easy as we can.
I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but I think at least as far as we are tonight, we just take one at a time.
Yeah.
And if, if something were to happen and, and anybody we approved were unable to gain state regulatory authority or unable to get ZBA authority, anything at all, then at that point, at some point, it would either become obvious to us or you would come, I don't mean you, any applicant would come back to us and say, hey, sorry, this isn't gonna work.
Yeah.
And at that point, we have another license to award, if we choose.
No, this is not a discussion or a reflection on you guys at all, I think you're great, I'm just trying to, as I sit here, I've been here long enough...
It's like you guys are having an open discussion or something.
So, I've sat here two years, you know, if something happens two years ago, I'd be like, oh, that's the vote which triggered this, so I've just, so, in effect, we have giving our license to these gentlemen, up until the point...
Assuming we take a vote later tonight, I think we provisionally giving a license to these gentlemen, they have their hoops to jump through and they know what they are.
So what...
And unless and until we learn that they're unable to jump through all of those hoops, then that license is...
Wait a minute, we're not actually issuing a license, we're just...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Host community agreement.
You're basically issuing a right to allow us to, to submit to the state.
Yeah.
Because you're tied to a location, so if the zoning board isn't favorably disposed on the special permit, I think that ends it.
Yes.
Or a year and a half happens and they're stagnant with the state, we've got other people that are really eager and got their ducks in a row.
Yeah, right, so the special permit...
Is there a shelf life on this HCA or...
I think those are things we can probably work out.
I mean, you'd be able to enforce those hooks probably through the special permitting, which, you know, if...
This just starts them in the process.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to negotiate myself out of this, the point is, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, you know, it's not like we end up in the queue and all of a sudden, like, we steamroll, there's ways to still remove people because of your local zoning process. You know, so if people are sitting on it or whatever, you know...
So all we'll really be asking for tonight is a motion to allow Matt to be the signatory on a host community agreement, once it's been drafted and is acceptable to all parties.
Is that how we should word it? Should there be any further review by the board?
I think you should word it that there wouldn't be any changes.
Yeah.
Understanding that there would be no changes.
To our template.
To your template, authorize me to sign it, and then it's just a ministerial task. If we're gonna make any changes to the language, I think, I wouldn't feel comfortable, I'd have to go back to you.
All right, I would move that we empower our attorney to prepare an HCA for the gentlemen that are before us, that would have no substantive changes from the other HCA we approved, and give Matt signatory authority over that.
Second.
You're frowning, is that all right?
I frown naturally, it's my natural state of resistance.
Motion's been made and seconded.
It was decent.
You could have done better, right?
Go, say, you'll get the chance.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Cool. Thank you guys. Do you need us to stick around or...
No, we're good.
Okay.
All right, the public safety budget discussion, and we have our, both of our illustrious chiefs here this evening.
Mr. Chairman, before you get started, I just kind of want a word about process. FinCom is going to be scheduling these budget meetings with our department heads as we go through this month, next, and early March. My preference is that they present to you first, because ultimately the budget, when it is finalized, will be the selectmen's budget submitted to FinCom for review as a document. Budget submitted to FinCom for a review as a document in its entirety. We're not able to make all those trade-offs yet. We're still gathering information on major accounts. But in order to be timely, we have to get the process rolling, but this is the way I would like to do it because you have the opportunity to give feedback to the department head. The department head can interact with you and we can decide whether any revision would be necessary before they go to FinCom, which is a little bit more formal setting. So that's, we'll roll this out. You'll always be a week ahead of FinCom with your department heads.
Okay.
I don't have to take a vote tonight, but anything that pops out at you as something that you want to work on, then we should have a week to do that.
Makes sense.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Are you a movie star today?
Not a movie star.
Not a movie star today?
Yeah. When any TV station asks me for a statement, I tell them I have a face for radio. Respectfully decline, but they're very, uh-
You look good.
Yeah, thank you.
It was nice work.
Thanks. Yeah, it was a, just to get started on that, we had the investigation yesterday, which with a little bit of luck and some good police work and a good dog.
Yep.
We were able to make an arrest fairly quickly, so we're still in the process of investigating, but I think we'll have this one wrapped up by the end of the day tomorrow.
Did the dog get a bite?
I was just going to say-
The dog eat? Yeah.
Dog eat?
Yeah, the dog ate his toy. Yeah.
My day has been made.
Yeah.
A walking toy. I have a sneaking suspicion that there was probably a long list of priors sitting there.
Um, yeah, there's quite a history.
Yeah.
So it'll be out of work for a while, but it's good for us. So just a brief overview of the budget, there's really not a whole lot of change. The police department budget is basically three components: salaries, expenses and the cruisers. You'll remember last year, we made an adjustment to the cruiser line item because they were making a change in the years of cruisers. So instead of buying two like we were set up for, we ended up buying a third. So in 2018, we replaced three. Last year, we replaced three. I'm sorry, nine, yeah, so we have three 18s now and three 19s. So the last two fiscal years. So we shouldn't have to talk about cruisers till 2024 when we get back on the two-two and two track, which will be good. And because there were new models this year, when we replaced those three and three, we replaced the equipment. So we should get another cycle out of this equipment. Usually get two cycles out of each cruiser exchange because the models change and the equipment obviously changes, whether it's cages in the back of the car or whatever. So I'm content that we're going to be good at least into 2024. We get the 100,000 mile, five-year warranties. A lot of the major repairs right now are covered under warranty, so it's basic maintenance that we have to worry about. Oil changes, tires, stuff like that, but brake jobs, but nothing major. So I'm confident until 2024, we'll be good. So that's going to decrease our budget compared to last year's a little bit, but going to, this one, full-time staff is the same, part-time staff is the same. We have 30 employees overall, 15 full-time officers with myself and the lieutenant, four full-time dispatchers, so 19 full-time employees, six part-time officers, I'm sorry, five part-time officers and six part-time dispatchers, so 11 part-time people. On the salary side of the budget, there's a total of eight accounts or line items in the salary side. That whole salary side is dictated by contract and personnel bylaw, whatever the public safety compensation plan is for the full-time dispatchers and the part-time dispatchers. So with the contract increases, the salary side compared to this year budget is going to go up just about 3.4%. And that includes in it a 1.75% increase in salaries. And then there was an additional bump for accreditation of a 1% overall. In October of this year, we achieved the certified status in the accreditation process, which is the first part of finalizing that. In March, we'll be going for full accreditation and I expect we'll hear on that by July 1st at the latest of the next fiscal year. So it's basically a 2.75% increase in the salaries, but there's also with that, it changes the overtime rate, so you have to account for that. And there's also, I anticipate, a $4,000 increase in the educational incentive line, which brings the salary side up about 3.4%. If we move down to expenses, the expenses total from this year is up 1.5%. There's approximately 25 accounts or line items in that expense side of the budget with, you know, five of those alone add up to about $95,000, which is about 61% of the budget just in, in five of those accounts, which is repairs, training, our RMS software, fuel and dues and membership, which some of those things in that line item are contractual as well. So in FY '18, our expense side, there was a surplus at the end of the year of about $1,058. And in FY '19, there was a surplus of about $1,152. And right now, at this point, halfway through the year, I'm just under 50% salaries and expenses. So we're right where we should be. So there's, there's obviously, there's not a lot of room. And if you look at the last two years and you look historically, really what's left in that expense side of the budget is not a lot of fat. You're looking at one serious, you know, cruiser repair right there that would eat up that surplus of 1,000 or whatever it is. So there's, we looked at adjusting some of those accounts and we came up with basically a 1.5% increase. Should keep us right exactly where we need to be with the expenses. The cruiser side, obviously, last year there was $1,22,500. That was for the three cruisers. So this year, that's bottomed out. That's going to be zero. So the bottom line with salaries, expenses, zero cruisers this year. We're asking for $1,794,238, which is about 3.5% less than last year, but that one big chunk is the cruisers. So you're going to have a substantial increase when you get back to 2024. You're going to see like probably by that time, close to $95,000, $100,000 increase for those two cruisers, you know, give or take. So there'll be quite a jump there, but I don't, the way things have been going in the past, if fuel stays where it's at, we average about 14,000 gallons a year. If fuel stays where it is, I don't see us, you know, having to ask for more than, you know, the average 1.5 to 2% increase in the expenses. It's just inflation and how things go up. It's, you know, one thing goes down, one thing goes up. You know, we got a good deal on our cell service, that goes down a little bit, then something else always seems to go up when something goes down, so we're never really getting ahead. But that's a quick rundown. I can answer any questions that you have.
Matt, the food line, the food line, food line item? That's all McGlaughlin, isn't it?
Uh, he doesn't get much. I'd love to have some, but Gene doesn't. No, that's, uh, Gene's, yeah, very, yeah, those are for our guests.
What do our guests get?
Is it McDonald's?
Well, they have their choice. Depends on what time it is. They have a choice from Douglas House of Pizza or the Gregory's, or in the morning, they can get something from Coffee Bean.
It's not bad.
Yeah.
No, like who I am, McDonald's run for them?
No, we're very, we like to provide structure where we're from, so three squares a day. We don't like the straight. In the other accounts in the expense side, you can look, obviously, they're pretty straightforward, they're pretty self-explanatory. Again, we go back every couple of years, we keep track of everything that we spend out of each account. We try to, it what really matters is the, obviously, you stay within the bottom line, but every account is pretty much spot on where it should be. The only thing I usually worry about a little bit is the fuel. You know, remember those years where we went in, I think we were probably at 240 when we budgeted it or something and we were up over three bucks. So silly things like that can happen, but since I've been here, going on 24 years and working with Chief Lowly and since I've been in on the budget process, we've never had to come back to the finance committee or the board of selectmen and ask for more money. We always live within the budget. And the expense side is tight, but it gets us through.
I don't have any questions on it. It looks pretty straight.
I think you do a great job of what we give you, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I have no questions on the budget, do you?
Are you happy with the training? Do we have enough ammunition for practice and?
I'll be honest with you, and Mr. Wilgic and I talked about it the other day, you can, you can never have enough training in this job because something is always coming up. There's different areas, there's mental health, there's new classes coming out. We have a lot of people that are specialists in what they do. We have people on the SWAT team, we have accident reconstructionists, we have firearms instructors, we have firearm armorers. Some of these courses can cost upwards to $500 to $750. So what we've been doing the past couple of years is a lot of our training is online, so we get our hours in. Every officer is mandatory, has to have 40 hours of training. That's what the state says that you have to have. You have to have 40 hours, but they have certain required things that we take online. But again, we do our firearms. Instead of qualifying twice a year, we go out three times, we try to get out four times. But that's a good point because every time we go out, that's more money in ammunition and time. You just can't do it with a schedule. You can't get 19 people to the range in one day, so you have to space it out. Someone's got to be at work, someone's got to be on shift. So, yeah, we discussed that. Training can always be higher, but we're getting everybody what they need at this point. We're doing a lot of the online stuff, a lot of the in-service online and we bring in the firearms, we'll bring in the Blue Line trailer. I don't know if you've seen it out there, but Matt's seen it and Suzanne's heard it.
I've heard it.
Lot of plops going on in the parking lot, but it could be higher, but we're getting everybody what they need.
So and all your officers, their weapons are all still in good shape, no retooling needed at this time.
Weapons are in good shape. We replaced the vest last year. We got $13,000 through the state and federal and whatever we didn't have enough for, we paid out of our asset forfeiture account, which was like a couple thousand dollars, but still that, we got the federal and state grant. The weapons are on capital, I believe, in not this fiscal year, the following fiscal year, and they were replaced about eight years ago, so we're spot on with that as well. And that's usually, believing or not, it's usually not that big of a big-ticket item because we trade in what we have and, you know, being a municipality, you get a really good deal on the firearms. So I think we have that on capital. I'm pretty confident that we'll get the nod.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Fire Chief.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all? Really nice to see everyone tonight. Did you, did you all get a copy of the presentation? All right, good, awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it came a little later in the day, so my apologies for that.
That is actually called out on.
Who would have blamed Suzanne anyway?
Exactly.
I know Kevin would have.
Falling past practice, yeah.
Uh, yeah, just wanted to go over the budget with you. Not much has changed as for the fire department or the ambulance department as well. Wanted to go over what we have for staffing. Right now, we have myself, one time, one full-time fire chief and also a paramedic, one deputy chief and EMT basic, that's deputy Ferno. Two call captains, one's an EMT basic and one's an EMT paramedic. I have three full-time lieutenants. Two are paramedics and one is a basic. Two call lieutenants, one's an EMT basic and one's a first responder. We have eight call firefighters, five of them are EMT basics. We have three per diem basics that are on the roster. Two probationary firefighters, in other words, they can't go in burning buildings or they can come to the scene as long as they're with an officer and what, but they haven't been to the fire academy yet. And obviously, our, my right hand, my administrative assistant, Lisa, so. For, for activity for 2019, 346 fire calls of all different various, from structured fires to car accidents, numerous car accidents, you name it, we probably see it. Ambulance calls, EMS, 799 for the year. That's a little down from past couple of years. That's actually up from last year and down from two years ago. It just goes to show you that our call volume can fluctuate somewhat. EMS mutual aid to surrounding towns, 41 times over 2019, other towns called us for an ambulance. And again, we had an ambulance out of service for almost a year, and so we asked for mutual aid from other towns 67 times. So I understand that safety's the most important thing, but that's, that's almost, that's between 100 and $125,000 of revenue we weren't able to bill out because of that. But most importantly is that that's a longer response because an ambulance is coming from another town. So we have two new ambulances. Our fleet is up to snuff, as for the first time in my career. We have an ambulance that's a year old now. We got our ambulance that the state helped us with, Senator Fatman. I know that you tried to contact him. I haven't heard back from him. I'm going to try to contact him again for another photo op because we're very appreciative that the state helped us out with that. And it's, our one that's a year old is in at Place Motors right now for warranty work because it's already got a, an oil leak in the gas, in the oil pan and a heater core leak. But that's, it's all warranty work, it's to be expected and it did a lot of work for one ambulance over the past year, so we're certainly appreciative of that. As far as fire salaries, our fire salaries are $415,000 in, in 320, 415, 320. It's up a little bit. We did have, we lost one basic and we replaced him with a paramedic, so that's, that's $15,000 more here, so that's a little bit of a jump. But with the staffing, and we've got a gentleman that's out IOD, so it was difficult for us to cover shifts when we, when we had some basics. So in my opinion, having that extra medic and having the medic medic is something that works much better for us. But we're not quite where we want to be, but certainly we're, we're thankful that we were able to upgrade that position. Let's see, what other changes were there in there? We cut the, we cut the part-time a little bit. Actually, that's on EMS side. So there's an increase in the, in the salaries for, basically with COLAs and steps that are contract of $37,053. As far as expenses, we were 114, 253 last year. This year, we're requesting 126, 369, which is an increase of $12,116. I'll go through some of that with you. The first one was for maintenance contracts. We did have to increase that one $1,000 because we now have a maintenance contract with the boiler for the fire department, the furnace. boiler for the fire department, the furnace. We would have it serviced, but we want to make sure that we're under agreement and that we're doing that on a yearly basis, and that contract costs us $1,000 a year. If you go down to 53800, other services, we increased that $3,000. In other services, that increase is so that we can test our hose annually. We've been doing it in-house for years, but with the amount of staffing we have, it's just not logistically possible. You get all the hose stretched out, you get a charge up, the engine's running, you get an ambulance call, you got to leave, and that's not very good. The other thing is, none of us have really ever been formally trained and certified on how to test hose, and we don't know, we've got a hose tester that's like 20 years old. We don't know that that's ever been calibrated, so we'd rather have a company come in in one day, and this is something that's required by ISO to keep our insurance rates down. We're at a very good position. We have a good ISO rating now. We want to keep it that way. That's required annually to do that by the ISO, and also NFPA 1561 requires that. And it's the standard for annual inspection, testing of hose. And again, that's so that when you're at a fire, hose doesn't burst, and all of a sudden the guys are inside, and they have no water because the hose burst, because we didn't check it. So it's definitely something that's good for the town to do and make sure that we're checking. Next, we have 55811 is uniforms. We went up on that. Let's see here. We went up on that $2,500 on the fire side, and you'll see when we get the ambulance, we went up on that from the ambulance side. And we'll talk about that because we're going to get into some of the logistics of the call firefighters and making them feel part of the team, making sure they have uniforms so that they match everybody else. Nothing be worse than being on the team. Yeah, but you don't get a uniform. It's a little bit demotivating, so we want to make sure that that was a request that we asked for. And the other thing was, there are calls where you don't, we're not wearing turnout gear, but you're on the highway, so you want to have a high-visibility, good coat that's able to be seen, and you're protected from inclement weather as well. So we tried to cover that on both sides, on both sides of the budget. Also, training, travel for training. The way it's always worked is, when we send a call firefighter to the fire academy, they've never been paid for the hours that they're there. It's a 220-hour course. They haven't been paid. Stow is a good distance away. They've never been paid for training, so we thought it would be advantageous to put some money into training so that they would get mileage for when they went. I know if a full-time firefighter goes to the academy, they get mileage both ways where they go, so we want to make it, make the playing field level there as well and make sure that those things are covered.
That's for the call guys?
Call guys, yep. That'll cover both, because if we send someone through to full-time academy. But if you send a couple of guys to the call academy too, I mean, $1,500 should cover all that travel for the year.
How is our call team these days?
Pardon me?
How is our call team? Are we...
We're going to talk about that a little bit when we get further on down, but I will definitely answer that question for you. Replacement equipment, an increase of $6,500 for turnout gear. We got, remember when we got that $165,000 from Wallam Lake? We got some gear then. We also got some gear through an AFG grant through the federal government a few years ago. We've had some turnover. We had some firefighters and medics that get trained and then go to a town for more money or a better schedule or whatever. Now you have gear. You've paid for gear for them. You've got to find someone else to fit it. And you also want to continually rotate your gear around. It has a 10-year expiration date. But I've had two sets of gear in the budget. I've already gone, I've already fit like three or four guys this year for gear because of turnover, so I added a little bit there to try to cover us as far as that goes. On the ambulance side, oh, so I should read the total. The total for fire, both fire expenses and salaries would be $541,689 is what our request is thus far. As far as the ambulance goes, not a whole lot of changes there either. $323,921 as compared to $329 last year. That went down because we cut the call salaries for the call ambulance. And that's really about the only change there, so it's down $5,700. As far as the expenses, we did go up $5,829. The increase, number one, our first increase was for medical supplies. Very recently, at one point, Milford Hospital tried to, they started, they phased it in. First, they said, "Well, we're not going to cover any medications for a cardiac arrest. You're going to have to pay for those." And then all of a sudden, after that went for a year or so, or a year or two, they sort of out of the blue just said, "Oh, we're charging you for everything now." So we saw a little bit of an uptick in our medication part of our medical supplies, so we added $2,000 there, because we had already negged it this year, but we had money in other areas of our medical, but we negged it there, so we wanted to make sure that we beefed that up a little bit so that we'd had no problem with our medications. And as I mentioned before, we upped the uniforms. So there's the other $2,500 on the ambulance side. We took $2,500, asked for $2,500 on the ambulance side and $2,500 on the fire side. So the increases with, for the ambulance budget for this year, $423,163 with expenses and salaries. And then finally, on the civil defense side, which is our emergency management, we've joined a Blackstone Valley Emergency Regional Group, which is a number of emergency managers in the area from different towns. We meet over in Grafton. I think Uxbridge is part of it, Upton's part of it, Northbridge, Grafton. We have an emergency management, what we have to have is a local emergency planning team, but what we've done is we've merged a bunch of towns. We're trying to leverage grant money that way so that we can spread it out. We have a CERT team that doesn't have high-visibility rain coats or anything like that. So these are things that, why we thought it was beneficial to get in a group like this, and the dues for that is $500, so we just added $500 onto that side for emergency management. And one other thing I put bold here, in bold was, please remember and notice that in our five-year budget, I had asked for a paramedic or EMT basic, knowing it probably wasn't going to be funded, but I keep it there just to document that I've asked for it all along. And there are some challenges on the fire department's side that I feel that I must bring to your attention, to the attention of the board and also the administrator. And the administrator and I, and I think Kevin had met with one of our call captains. As you know, for years, the call fire department's been the backbone of Douglas Fire Department and has continued to reinforce our full-time operation. However, there's a growing trend that's getting more and more difficult to recruit and retrain call firefighters and EMTs. I think my first nine years here, I put about 10 people through the call firefighter program at the fire academy. In two years, I haven't had one person that's made it or has been on the fire department long enough to actually send them to the academy. They're just, they're not coming in the door. And it's really not Douglas. It's just a nationwide trend. And what I'm finding is, it's a growing challenge for call firefighters to juggle family commitments with their, you know, sports, sports on Sundays, Saturday mornings, evenings. They're at games. They have other time constraints. And quite frankly, it's getting to the point where the fire service isn't a place that people want to be anymore. They see that there's a huge cancer risk there. They're seeing a rise in suicides of firefighters. They're seeing a rise in just danger and just the things that we're exposed to. They, people are just like, "Yeah, I'm out. I'm not up for that." So we're seeing that that's a trend, and so we want to do what we can to try to nip that in the bud and help our call guys out. It just, I'm finding that it's more and more that they're not, they're not able to, they're not available. So if you get an ambulance that goes out and you have a crash, it's difficult to get an engine out to support them and make the scene safe, whether it be blocking the scene, making sure the battery's disconnected on the car, or to fight a fire. It's sort of helter-skelter. We want to make sure that we have that staffing, and the staffing is dwindling. So we're going to do everything we possibly can to address the situation. I know other towns are having the same problem. Got some ideas. Talked to some of the full-timers about it. Talked to some of the call guys about an open house and about a recruitment program, an open house. So those are some things that we're trying to do. But some other things that we thought, that we reflected in the request in meeting with some of the call members, some things that they had asked for was, number one, to pay, to be paid in increments of one hour. Right now, if you get, if we go out and we get a, say it's a carbon monoxide call, and I get there and I deem, you know, well, that's a, it's a false call. You can hold the engine in quarters. Well, they come to the fire station, they come from their home 15 minutes and say, "Okay, holding quarters," they get paid for 15 minutes. They're not paid for an hour. They're paid for 15 minutes or half an hour. Also, something we thought might be good is, we'll set a time on the overnight and do a two-hour minimum. If a guy comes out, he gets a minimum of two hours. What they make, if a full-time member comes back, they might come back for a training and get time and a half, but what these guys get in an hour, in two hours, might not be, might be what they get in just an hour. So we're trying to level the playing field and make it a little bit more motivating as far as that goes, too. Also, the clock would start when they leave home. I don't see that that's really much of a difference. Rate change verification to reflect one rate. I've talked about this to the town administrator and Kevin as well. For the longest time, we have two rates, or some have two rates. So if you take a person who's a captain on the fire side, trained, certified firefighter, and a captain, and then they're a paramedic, say they respond on the engine. They respond on the engine. We get to a crash, find out, "Oh, we got a person that's really injured. We're going to need an extra hand in the back of the ambulance." Move them over to the ambulance. They get paid at a higher rate on the ambulance, but they came on the engine, so they're getting fire pay. So I think personally, they ought to be paid for the highest level that they're trained at monetarily. So if they're a paramedic and they get $3 more as a paramedic, that's what they ought to be paid for across the board. So that was something that we'd have to go, we'd have to come up with a new pay scale through the personnel board and myself and Mr. Wojcicki, and that would have to go to town meeting, but it's something I want to certainly bring up. Also, duty uniforms. It's always been, well, we'll try to throw you a shirt or something like that, but to try to put something in the budget where when a firefighter comes on, he gets two pairs of pants, he gets two uniforms, and then after five years, if he's been here five years, then we can buy him a Class A uniform. So that if we go to a funeral or we go to some event, as a department, everyone looks the same, and, you know, they look professional. So those are some things that we had talked about. That's really it as far as the, as far as the call guys go, the call firefighters.
I'll just weigh in on the, they should be, that hourly idea, right? Our videographers, they're great, right? They can sit through a 15-minute recreation commission and get paid for three, so I would really kind of like to see something there.
It has to be. It's hard to get up out of bed in the morning and go home.
I mean, when we had the fire up here on Depot Street, it was dicey, okay? I had 12 guys and they got a ton of work done. I was never more proud of them. So when the rubber meets the road and we get something really bad, people are there. But there's times like during the day, if the ambulance goes out and we get a fire call, sometimes it's me. I'm thankful to have John and Adam over at the highway. If I didn't have them, I'd be up the creek without a paddle. I mean, you're calling mutual aid, and that's a while. I was just reading an article tonight about, it's sometime down in Middleton. They had a fire, and everyone showed up at the selectmen's meeting. "We want to increase the fire budget." Just an article I saw tonight. But people, when it happens, it hits home and people realize it. But one of the things I wanted to mention, I sort of like the way this is worded. I'm not sure if any of you know, many of you know of the term cascading effect, but a cascading failures occur when one part of a system fails, or in this case, if firefighters are not available to respond. So therefore, one part of, if one part of an interconnected system fails, the whole system fails. So some of the things that we, that I've asked for tonight, we'll probably address things temporarily, but they're only a stopgap, and they're only going to address things temporarily. What really needs to happen is that we need to add more full-time firefighters, and when the call guys are there to help, they're absolutely 100%, but the problem is, sometimes they're just not able to be there, and that's something none of us can, none of us can control. So we got to think about that. We got to think about the vulnerabilities and the safety issues that can be presented with that, so... Really, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions on the budget.
Mutual aid, is it included any Rhode Island, Atlantic towns?
It does, from time to, especially on the fire side.
Yeah.
It gets a little bit more difficult with the EMS side because states have different regulations on the EMS side. Certain towns, and you get into another state where your protocols are completely different, you're relying on your protocols from the state you originate from, but it's really not always the best standard of care both ways, you know what I mean? And it can be, it can be confusing. But as far as fire, absolutely. We border two states, and we have them on our run cards. And when we get, you know, fires or incidents where we need extra help, and that, if I have a first alarm or a second alarm fire, I'm going mutual aid. Even with what we had up here this past March, we got a lot of work done, but we had to go to a three-alarm in short, in short time. 12 guys working for the first, that's, 12 guys is a good start for a fire at 2:30 in the morning. But in the daytime, two guys or three guys, you know, we're calling mutual aid right off the bat to get them on the road. Call it automatic mutual aid, you know. If they hear, and a lot of us chiefs have, we have ears on for what's going on in the other towns. If, I always say, if you hear me in a bad way, don't wait for me to call. Just come, and then we'll sort it out when we get there. So we have our backs as far as that way goes.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Yes. Approved Class II license renewal for all-around auto sales and possible vouch.
This is the one application or renewal that was not in your packet for all the other renewals. He did come in finally and give me his application. It is complete, so I asked that you would approve it. And I'll have you sign it later.
I approve the application.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I believe we're on two minutes now, right?
A land purchase.
A land purchase.
Land purchase. I missed that.
This is the one that the Department of Fish and Game sent us this notice saying that they are interested in purchasing some land, but they really didn't give us any information as to what piece of land it is. We kind of did the best we could to try to figure it out, but we really think that we need to ask them for more information so that we know exactly what piece of land that they are purchasing before you make any recommend, before you do any support letters, letters of support.
I would agree with that.
All right.
So if they can't be specific as to what they're looking for, then we can't support them in that.
I'll put it on our future agenda if I get, if I get the information.
Interesting that it's Fish and Game and not DCR.
It's my first in 20 years.
Term end run comes to mind. I don't know if that's what you think.
Backdoor.
20% of the land's in Douglas, I guess, and the rest is Webster.
Correct. That was what I saw.
And when they get us 100% of the information, we'll talk to them.
We'll get about 1% of the taxes.
Point one. All right, so minutes.
Well, just as, while I appreciate the Fish and Games information, are we inclined to do this?
Not really.
I would not be inclined.
Just checking. Making sure you guys are doing your job.
Certainly open a discussion, but...
I'm not inclined to talk to anybody. They can't tell us what they're looking to buy, so...
We're willing to negotiate on an open-ended basis on all issues.
I would be more than happy to sell them the land at 5,000% above market value. How's that? Is that good?
They need to work on their literacy, too, because it's not a tract, T-R-A-C-K. A tract of land is T-R-A-C-T.
Suzanne.
To clarify what it is they think they want to buy.
Can we also send the representative a copy of Hooked on Phonics?
I'd fill the home with another grammar specialist seated to the right of me.
If that's okay. I'm sure our town administrator would be happy to red ink what they'd sent and...
If he is, I'd be overjoyed.
The only thing that would make it worse is if it was tracts and they use an apostrophe. That would just, that would be over the top.
With an inappropriate semicolon.
Exactly.
That's grounds for like a full-blown coup. You don't have an inappropriate semicolon. We're on TV for crying out.
Yes.
But the residents liked the last time we had a discussion about semicolons.
Everybody does.
If I was forced to do stand-up, I would do my little bit on semicolons. All right. All right.
I'm sure you'd have more to.
Yeah.
Do you do that at the planning meetings, the mass planning?
I have not been asked to do that yet.
I'm sure that they, it would make their meetings far more entertaining. All right. Now, can we do the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 17. And while we're at it, the executive session minutes of that same day, retaining all.
Second.
All right. The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain.
You were being fleeced by a rodent, I believe, at the time.
But I was in a warmer climate.
Did you go to Star Wars Land?
I did.
How was that?
Now I understand.
My children were very happy with it.
Yeah. Cool.
They're happy, you're happy, and that's it.
Your report, Mr. Administrator.
I have three quick things for you. I'll do the bad news first. We put together some fantastic grant applications for three major initiatives. One was for replacement of diesel equipment under the Volkswagen settlement, and we were unsuccessful there. We were very surprised by that outcome. The truck we were looking to replace is a 1994. Then, when we hooked it up to the emissions testing equipment, it blew it up. So.
That's a bad sign.
I don't know if we can make a truck of the case.
Said carbon footprint, infinite.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, sometimes bureaucrats in Boston, they get real focused on their policy-driven analysis of these grant applications, and they end up with very strange results. I don't want to burn bridges, but I will say this much, that if the towns of Winchester and Westboro need trucks, then they can take their AAA bond rating, go get themselves a bloody truck. And Douglas, that doesn't have cash going on the vine, should bump up a couple of steps in the analysis. I just think that if you're really serious about climate change and adjustment, then go to the communities that cannot afford to replace their equipment and let the Winchesters and Westbournes of the world buy their own.
So, rational thinking in politics.
Shout-out to my friends at DEP there. I was very surprised to learn that we did not win the ADA grant for the senior center because that was a fantastic narrative. Patrice worked very hard. That grant comes around every single year, and I think we'll be right back at it next year. Same thing with the truck grant, we'll be right back at it. So, we're still waiting to hear on the third, which is the IT Best Practices Grant. We did look for the full quarter million there, because we want to leverage money approved by town meeting for the backup generator to build in the redundancy in cybersecurity that we need for the rest of our network. So, we're still holding out hope. I'm referring to the IT guys, Obi-Wan Kenobi, because he is my last hope at this point, for a nice big grant this year. Better news, as you know, the supplemental budget was signed by Governor Baker. There was a Chapter 90 increase for most municipalities in that. So, we're up $36,485. So, for a total for fiscal '20 is now 401-333. So, we'll take every little bit we can for roads.
I recall the last increase was in the hundreds, not the thousands.
Yeah, you're right.
53 cents.
Lastly, I, I think you're becoming more accustomed to these ridiculously obtuse fiscal notes that I endeavor to write. I think it's a good exercise for all of us because when there's a change in the budget forecast, you need to be able to explain it. If you want to read the two pages, there's a tremendous amount of detail. Long story short is this, when the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group, that's us, Webster and Dudley, traveled in schools, went out to bid for retiree health insurance, which is a benefit year starting January 1st, we got seven bids. We had five carriers, they were allowed to submit more than one bid, they could partner with different front-end customer relations groups, which they did. We had five carriers, seven bids. We were paying $389 per member per month for the most popular of our two plans. It's 101 people versus six people, so it's wildly much more popular. 389 per member per month, and we're down to 291. So, this is substantial savings, changing carrier from Tufts to Aetna and working with retiree first. The even better news is that when they bid that, they locked in their rate for year two. They were willing to commit to a price for year two, which was only basically the same rate. Now, the federal government has come along and said they're going to eliminate the health insurance fee on Medicare supplemental plans for calendar year 2021. So, that's another 5.5% off. So, we're locked in right now at 274.60 per member per month for fiscal '22, for calendar '21, which will be partially fiscal '21, '22. So, this chart in the back here summarizes what we're saving versus what we're paying now, which is about $78,000 in this coming year's budget. But we had projected, because we're very conservative with how we budget, a 6% year-over-year increase on this set of plans because the trend in the market is it. We get more stability in Medicare because Medicare prices reimbursements are sticky. But, so now, when we look at the five-year projection, knowing that we're going to be dropping so far down, our year-over-year changes, 120, 138, 157, 169,000 over the course of these five years, just because we were, we had it going like this and it's going to go like this. That's very good news for the years three, four, and five of the budget projection, because that's a lot of money to save. So, this experiment with the Strategic Health Group has certainly really paid off on the retiree side. It's also paying off, my last thing would be, remember when we went into the self-insurance scheme for our active employees, we said we would be getting rebates back from the pharmaceutical companies that our carrier was keeping in the fully insured model. We got our first check, was that one quarter or half the year?
I don't know, the timeframe.
I think it's the first quarter.
I would, I would guess the first.
So, for the first quarter, our rebate was nine, just a little bit under $94,000.
Wow.
It doesn't come back to the town, it comes back to the trust.
Okay.
But that still takes pressure off rate increases, because that's the money we already paid, the taxpayers already paid that to provide the benefit, now it came back to the trust. So, so far, so good, knock on wood, it has been a very beneficial move to go to the self-insurance model and the group purchasing.
Basically, what, what's the, the retirees and, and regular full-time employees, what's the savings? Hundreds of thousands of.
Well, this year, remember, we were looking at an 11, and by being self-insured, we only had a 1.4. We're still going to project 6% on that because we, that's so dependent on our claims experience, and I hate to try to predict claims. What we are noticing, we have a fair amount of data in so far, so we're about six months into this fiscal year, and we are exactly where we should be to have a good year. So, we want to end the year at about 85% of our working rate paid out for medical expenses. That's would be the target. We started off nice and low, which is where we want to be as a high-deductible plan, so for the first quarter, we were at 45% medical loss ratio. We're up in the 60s now with this, about where we should be. We see a lot of activity because we have a high, high-deductible plan in the last two quarters. So, we're just holding on, hoping that we end up at 85. But if we end up there, we should be looking at a renewal that's something that we can swallow, a single-digit renewal instead of double digits.
Getting back to the flatter line, a flatter climb on retirees, how does that affect our OPEB liability?
Well, I think it's, it should be reduced.
We will. We'll report that at the end of the year.
Okay.
Do these annual adjustments, but it will help.
Excellent.
As, as well as changing to the high-deductible plan. You know, time to make these, these changes will help us. Our count is going up, though. I think we'll go to 107 next year.
Yeah. From 107 to 110. We anticipate three retirements. And the budget, the five-year forecast builds in, I've built in two a year, just because I think that's prudent. And I just, I know enough about our roster to know we have a pretty decent group of people at the top step on the teacher's side, and we've got some folks here that will probably retire in the next five years. We know who they are. I think two a year is reasonable.
We've also made changes to our health insurance policy, too, that allows them to get off our plan.
Right.
And then, one time only, but that come back on.
Come back, right.
So, those little changes that we've been making over the last year and a half, as different situations come to us, we've been kind of tweaking that policy as well to kind of benefit the town and not hurting employees.
So, ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. We have any old business? Seeing as none, do we have any new business? Again, seeing as none, do we have a very eloquent, bone-in motion?
We'll do my best. We make a motion today at this moment to move into executive session for the purposes of collecting bargaining and interest in real property, and then we will leave that executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Excellent.
Well put. Thank you.
I would second that well, well-stated motion.
That well-stated motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Bone a nay.
Morse, aye.
Davis, aye.
Cortez, aye.